All right, we'll move forward and then we've got enough to have a quorum to get going. So we have the attendance, we'll move to comments from the public. We do not have an attendee on the webinar Zoom. Was there any comment tonight? We are all set in there. Approval of the minutes from October 11th, they were distributed. Can I have a look through? Excited by Susan, any comments, modifications, changes people want to make?
Jennifer did a good job with you.
All right, all fair, can you say aye? Any opposed? All right, does anybody want to abstain? All right, we're ready to go. Let's then move to the matrix. So to remind everybody what we have here, the we had a growing set, we have a group of projects that we've already and have already made it through the whole process. And now we are developing a group that are ready to recommend. Last, left in the shaded, the three that we put into that group last meeting. There was modifications from what the original request was to what the recommend, what the recommended request will be. And for anybody who was following the Youth and Family Services had come in originally for about 94,000. And Brad raised the issue of whether or not that 94,000 had included the FICA and Medicare and it had not. And so went back and made that calculation. And so that's why the number is now 97,270. It's based, that does now reflect the FICA. And then there was a series that were under review. And I was asked to get back in touch and see what additional information we can find. And unless anybody has any questions up to this point, I will just give you the information that I have gotten. Okay, so for American Legion, we have, we've been back and forth to them a couple of different times. And now what I, information I got was what their fundraising was in 2019, fundraising in 2021. And so this loss that is represented there is right in line with the way in which we calculated the information for the VFW. So it's the, you know, it's the difference because they were not able to run a couple of key fundraisers during 2020. So that is $17,200.
So it's, sorry if I'm not on this record, but are you suggesting we give them 17, too? Or is that, or the 88?
No, what, what, trying to be consistent in our process. What we were looking at in the past is for particularly these not-for-profits is to say, okay, what did you raise in 2019? What did you give us in 2021? And what did you raise in 2020? And then be able to determine what that, you know, loss was. And then what we would do with the ARPA funds is step in and kind of fill, fill the gap, as it were, bring people home. And so the recommendation would be the 17,200. Pure Blue is the Pure Blue Inn. And they had given us information about the revenue loss of in 20, or the revenue, net revenue of 2019 and the net revenue of 2021 for the months of April, May and June. And so we were looking last time at, you know, between 50, $60,000 as a result of that. However, it was pointed out at the, at the meeting that they were, even though they were mandated to close, they had long-term rentals there that they were not, they did not kick out. And so the question was, what was their actual revenue during 2020 for April, May and June? So the answer, they provided me a chart on that. So the answer, it, long way to get to is the revenue loss associated with being mandated to close was $11,934. They were able to, they did have, this is, if you take you back to 2020, this is where we had utility workers, there were people, you know, the first responders and folks like that were staying in hotels. And so they, they did have some customers based on that. And so this is, this is the net, net, net is the 11,934. So I would recommend that that's the number that we use for them for that. And then just jumping to the other blue for now, the Himalaya Cafe. Been back and forth a few times with them. They still, one of the things that we wanted to see was the SBA, the mess, the information that we've gotten was that the SBA had approved the restaurant revitalization grant, but had run out of funds. And so I asked for a copy of the approval from the SBA. And that's, that's not available. So right now, the only two things that we have available from them is the fact that they were approved for 22,000 for restaurant revitalization. Also asked what the patio that they built out front as a result of the COVID, what the costs were associated with, with that patio. And so we need to discuss what we want to do with that at this point. Do we want to recommend a number? Do we, we're not going to get a, the actual approval notice from SBA. It's just not available. Take one of the other numbers, come up with something else. What would the committee like to do at this point? I believe the number for the renovation for the patio was around 36,000. So could you just check that? Might be in the Dropbox.
So even though they were granted approval, timing timed out, they didn't have any, there wasn't any more funds.
Right.
That's, so that negates that question altogether. So now we're back to what they're asking for, the cost that they had to incur to make the patio.
Seems that way to me.
And was, I don't have to, and I didn't.
And I think that's 30, let's, for the purposes of this conversation, it's around 36,000.
Okay.
And so the question is whether or not, you know, we want to, A, if that's something we would like to help with, or whether we would want to pay for the whole thing. I would suggest that if we go in that direction, what we may want to do is split the guy because they do have, you know, it is a lovely patio. It is attracting additional clients and our customers. And it has expanded the restaurant. So there is an advantage to them for having it as well versus not it being solely COVID-related and then COVID and then.
Would they have been able to function without that patio? They would have only drive-through pickup.
Yeah, it's a little gray.
Well, I mean, I'm looking at it from, from my own business point of view. So excuse me if I hesitate here, but I also know as a business owner, it's a gamble. Do you want to spend this money in hopes that you get more?
Right.
Things, so I.
And they may not have even considered doing that had it not been COVID.
Exactly, exactly. One actually forced the other.
Right, right.
Now there is an advantage after the fact because I don't see that this town's going to say, okay, fold everything up and get rid of it the way it was prior.
Right. And, and no doubt they lost some money during COVID regardless, even if we can't throw a dollar figure at that, even if a restaurant didn't.
I'm fighting towards.
I do like that. It's one, like as a consumer, it's so nice to have a restaurant in this town that's not just burgers. I mean, it's, it's a nice thing to have and it looks a lot prettier. And I don't know what the right dollar amount, I think maybe there isn't one that we can.
Right, it can't really justify what we're coming up with, right?
Well, I, I sort of, they sort of justified it, I mean, for themselves, I mean.
No, no, I mean that, I mean, if it's other than that.
Yeah.
What is our, our criteria figuring that out? I mean, are there other restaurants on here? I don't think there were, right?
No, they weren't. Kristin, do you have a thought?
I have an issue with multitasking right now.
Oh, okay, all right. You, do you want me to tell you what the discussion was and to get your thoughts on it?
Sure, I, I was keeping track of some of it and then my boss emailed me. I was being consistent.
But where we're at, we're looking at Himalaya. Himalaya had requested 40,000. We've been back and forth on looking at what, what is the actual COVID-related number that would be making them home, which is effectively what we're, what we're trying to do with ARPA funds on a consistent basis. And they had mentioned that they had gotten a restaurant revitalization grant approval from the SBA that was then too late in the process to be funded. And that was at 22,000. Also, thanks to Matt's quick work, they also identified that they had to build the outdoor patio in order to be able to serve customers at the restaurant. And that was 33,000. And so what we're trying to figure out is we, you know, clearly this is an eligible entity. This is something, there's a clear loss associated with it. What number do we want to use to recommend to the Board of Selectmen?
And what's the?
And the only, and I guess the only thing I would say is that, only other point that I pointed out was that the patio, yes, we did have to take on the cost of building the patio, but the patio is also kind of, it continues to live on. And as was mentioned, is very attractive. And I'm sure it brings additional customers in. It's expanded at least during the spring, summer and fall. It's expanded their space. So whether we want to look at the full 33,000 or whether we want to in one way, shape or form split that cost.
Well, on the document I have, I thought they requested 40,000.
Right, so this would be less than 40. The 40 was, 40 was just kind of a generic number they threw out there to. We are looking for, you know, in, in all of these cases, we're looking for kind of hard numbers related to the COVID loss. So Judy?
Yeah, what if we considered filling that 22,000, that thing we couldn't get? They obviously had to prepare quite an application for that, right?
Yeah.
And that may cover all bases and give us something to, concrete to fall back on.
That seems fair. I think it sounds as fair as you're going to get with the information we have.
Right, uncomfortable then.
I agree with that. So fund them the money that they didn't get through the SBA, the 22,000.
All right, all right, great. See, this is great minds, thank you, Judy. Okay, so then there are still three that we do not, I don't have comments back on them. Sandra Roberts, we were worried, we were concerned about whether any zoning issues, that was resolved, but then we're waiting on construction estimates and we're still waiting on the construction estimates. The Maritime Education Network in trying to bring them kind of into the consistent process of looking at what, you know, what fundraising loss or other direct COVID-related loss could be identified. If you remember, what they were looking for was more funding to be able to move their, their school camp forward. And so I have not gotten a response on that. And Current Recovery Spot, we have gone back and forth on trying to identify what the loss was. But currently, the information, information on her side is not available. So I'm still waiting on that. And then the last two were ones that we put on hold, the Fire Department and the Old Sable Coastal Resilience Committee. So what I would suggest at this point is that if we are comfortable with 22 for the Himalaya Cafe, 11,934 for Pure Blue Inn and 17,200 for the American Legion, that we put all of them into the ready to recommend category. And we take that set of projects, vote on them tonight and move those forward to the Board of Selectmen to start the balancing process. And we will clearly still have money available. We can actually do the math here. 17,200, 20, 29. So that would be.
Almost 50,000.
Yeah, that would be 51 with 13, 57. So we would be at 1.4 million, a little north of that, probably 1.410. And we've got 2.9. So we would still have 1.5 million available should these other, you know, when these other ones get either resolved and ready to recommend or anything that we want to pick up as a result of the next agenda item.
Bruce?
Yes?
Actually, if you scroll up, I don't know, I think the sum total of, and maybe I'm wrong, projects that you are recommending tonight is 1.4. We've already appropriated others. So I don't think the remaining funds is exactly what you said. I could be wrong.
I know, you're absolutely right. And I appreciate you saying that. So that's 1.410, 1.670, right. So we're at about 1.2 to 1.3.
Okay.
Yep, you're absolutely right. Thank you for that. So are we as a committee ready to make that?
Do you want a motion?
Yes.
To make the motion to take the American Legion 17,000. The Pure Blue, 11,939 dollars. And Himalaya Cafe at $22,000 and move it up, ready to recommend to the Board of Selectmen.
And should we say also, and then recommend all of those in that ready to recommend category?
Did we make a motion to have those already done? No, we didn't, all right. But we haven't, I can amend my emotion then, so we don't have to go through steps. The aforementioned American Legion, Pure Blue and Himalaya Cafe to be added to the ready to recommend column of, and you want me to list all these?
No.
Okay. Starting with Economic Development Mission to Youth and Family Services to bring to the Board of Selectmen.
Because they're a second.
I second that.
Comments, questions?
Can, can we vote on them each individually?
You'd like to.
Well, I just, I, I still have some concern about, you know, I think we're straying from what, I've said this before, I think we're straying from what we talked about in the beginning of not kind of giving money to individual businesses and trying to have the biggest impact. So I, I just, and I don't think that's what we represented from the beginning. So I would like to be able to vote individually on the different things.
Let me ask you. Clarification, it's going to have to abstain from SaveBucks giveaway.
What's that?
Judy will have to abstain from SaveBucks giveaway.
So let me, Casey, is there one or two in particular that you would like to not, not vote for?
Yeah, the, the individual businesses.
Okay, so.
So like the Legion, I'm okay with.
So Pure Blue Inn and Himalaya, you are uncomfortable with?
Yeah.
Okay.
Not because I don't want to support them, but just because I think it's, it's, I, I'm concerned about consistency.
But you're, you're, you've got a policy. Okay, so why don't we, instead of voting on them all at one time, what we will do is vote on all of them except for three of them. We will vote, and those we will vote separately. So we will take out of the group the SaveBucks giveaway, Pure Blue and the Himalaya Cafe. And so with that, let's vote. All in favor, please say aye.
I have, yep, there's a motion on the board to put along one lump sum. So we can try and that motion.
Oh, okay.
And then, then do this one because I don't think we're covering what we're doing here.
All right, so let's, so let's, will you amend your motion to take these three out? And to recommend to the Board of Selectmen the others in the ready to recommend column?
Yes, we have to work, Jennifer, are you going to be able to work this correctly?
I'm on it.
You're on it, she's on it. Okay, so I make the motion that Jennifer is going to clean up for me.
Okay.
Which will be avoiding the Himalaya Cafe, Pure Blue and SaveBucks giveaway?
Correct. Okay, so that's the motion on the table. Is the second, you'll pick that second?
Yeah.
All right, we've had discussion, ready to vote. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, now we're going to take the SaveBucks giveaway. Can I have a motion for the SaveBucks giveaway to be recommended to the Board of Selectmen? I'll make that motion. Susan makes it.
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion on that? All in favor, please say aye.
You have to say aye.
And Judy has abstained. Okay, and then we're going to take Pure Blue Inn and Himalaya Cafe together. We have a motion to recommend those to the Board of Selectmen. I'll make the motion. Susan makes it. It's been seconded. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed?
Yes.
Casey? All right, we have done. So we have a group that we are ready to recommend. And Carl, do you want to talk about what the process is from here?
Yes. So the Board of Selectmen will have a meeting on November 8th. And this, I was actually going to bring this up. This, the way, the way we plan on doing this is going to the Board of Finance and then to town meeting. If possible, I'd like to get it to the Board of Finance next Tuesday, November 1st. I'd like to get it to the Board of Selectmen on November 8th. So if the Board of Finance acts, if that happens, and I don't really see any reason why it shouldn't happen, I have to ask if this committee, or at least the chairman and a few other folks are available. Probably not the best date in the world, Monday, November 28th. So Monday, November 28th is the town's annual town meeting by charter, the fourth Monday of November. Typically, it's held to what we call accept the annual town report for the fiscal year prior, which would be 21, 22. It doesn't mean that it cannot be a business meeting. I discussed it at the Board of Selectmen today that I'd like it to be a business meeting. And the idea would be to have all these items, which they have to be called at a town meeting anyway, put on from Monday, November 28th. It's already scheduled at the Old Sable Middle School for 6:30 on that day. So if we go along that schedule, I guess, Bruce, are you available that night? Okay. And that would be the idea is if Jennifer can get me the notes on this meeting, I will get it to the clerk for the Board of Finance tomorrow or Thursday. And then we'll get it on their agenda. And then I'll get it on the Board of Selectmen agenda for the following Tuesday, which, at which meeting we will do the call of the annual town meeting.
Okay, great. So then hopefully, if that process works, then by the end of November, then the monies will have been approved and the projects can be expecting the next step, which would be getting the, you guys have worked out the form that you're sending to all the.
Money can be released, I mean, you know, pretty much to most of these, except for the businesses, we'll probably have to, you know, but everybody else, I don't think there'll be an issue, obviously.
What is the timetable for having the money released to the individual or businesses?
It can be released that, that Tuesday. I mean, it can be released immediately.
Okay. Just wondering.
Once it's approved at town meeting, the money is good. It, it's, it can be done this morning, so.
We got it in the bag, so we're in good shape there. Okay, that sounds great. So we'll get that to you and we'll be ready to rock and roll. So the next item of business is the process going forward. And what I sent out to everybody and what's up on the screen at this moment is just a, taking a look at these projects that have already been approved or were ready to recommend before tonight. And to look at how they have fallen into those four pillars that when we got started, we said we, these were kind of key areas that we wanted to make sure there was a focus on. And I was delighted, actually, once I went through that process and found that we had, I won't say evenly distributed amongst the pillars, but we had certainly activity in each of the pillars that we had put out there. And, but I wanted to share that with you because as a lead into what we want to do as a committee on going for the balance of the funds and how we want to proceed in that regard. And that, I heartily thank everyone for the hard work to get us here. And I don't want to just say, okay, yeah, that's fine. I, I heartily thank everyone for the hard work to get us here, and I don't want to just say, okay, yeah, that's fine, that, keep on moving, and if people want to take a break from this for, you know, a month or so, or something along those lines, we, we can do that. Or if they want to just keep on moving and say, we've got somewhere around one-point-two million dollars still available to distribute, how do we want to, um, how do we want to set up some guidelines to make that happen? Ideas?
Well, we know the holiday season is coming upon us, but then there is also the grant finding too, if we were to look at some of the things that were presented or, or not recommended, but looked at. Um, we know that we were going to compare or pair those with, with some grant possibilities. So if we do have a hiatus of a few weeks for the holidays, I mean, I don't want to put this behind me long.
Right. And I'm, and I'm not suggesting that, I just know the people, you know, everybody's busy, and so, uh, if, if, if you want to keep, um, moving forward on this, I'm, I'm delighted to, to do that, um, but I just wanted to kind of test that. My sense of it is, we have, um, you know, we reached out to the community very broadly and said, if you've got something that you think is eligible for, uh, ARPA funds, please come in, and, uh, a lot of, lot of requests. We've handled most of those requests, and now the question is, um, with the remaining funds, we, when we have initially gotten together, we were, you know, looking at some bigger, you know, what I would, I would call, um, larger scale projects, going to Casey's point that she was making before, whether, uh, they were, you know, I think there was excitement around the table for, um, Business Development Center, um, idea of affordable housing, um, a community-wide event of some nature, coworking, uh, space, uh, concern particularly going into this winter with heating and food insecurity, um, bike trails, I mean, there was a lot of things, there's, there may not be an advocate today, or even an entity today, in the community that is ready to take those on. The question, I think, to us, and frankly to the Board of Selectmen, is, do we want to look at, um, any one or a couple of these ideas and actually solicit participation? And one of the things we heard, for instance, on affordable housing was, um, there is that initial cost of land, and if we use the ARPA funds to purchase property, that would then help reduce the overall cost of the development, we could perhaps stimulate, um, some affordable housing in town, some additional affordable housing in town. So that's, to me, that's kind of where we are in this process, and, um, I, you know, this is the kind of stuff that I'm excited about, so I'm ready to jump in and do it tomorrow, but, you know, I, as I said, other, other people may not.
Susan, we do have time on our side, so we don't have to select the project for it until the end of two thousand twenty-four, which I'm not saying that we should wait that long, though we have that timetable, and then it has to be finished by two thousand twenty-six.
Correct.
Right, so that does give us time within the upcoming year of two thousand twenty-three to solicit or select.
Develop. Explore. Yeah, develop ideas, whatever, whatever the case may be, so that's, so. Kristin or Casey, do you have, oh, Maureen? Do, do any of you?
I am here, I was late, but I'm, and I'm sorry, but I'm here.
Oh, good to have you, thanks. Um, were you, uh, were you there for our vote, so you know that we voted to move some, um, projects forward to the Board of Selectmen?
I wasn't, but I fully support everything that you guys have done, so thank you for doing all that in my absence tonight, I had a scheduling issue.
All right, so, okay, with that, uh, so we're now looking at base, the concept for phase two, how, how we want to do it, we don't need to decide, uh, what that process looks like tonight, but I would be very interested in people's ideas, uh, and then we can, you know, kind of come back in two weeks. Ideas?
I think it's really exciting to go back to, you know, taking care of all of these things, but going back to all the big ideas. I'm glad that this was included in the pack. And to look at that, and I think, yeah, taking a pause, COVID happened over two years ago now, and this money has been a long time coming for some, and I know it'll make a difference, but this is the, it would be nice to have a few little flagship projects that people can really see that are visible, that go above and beyond the, of the end date, to heal what happened in the past and be more forward-looking, but, um, yeah, but since we aren't under any time constraints, and we've just done nine months of committee, maybe we take a pause until January and catch our breath and come in then, that would be my suggestion.
Okay, good question, um, there are some here that we're waiting for more information on, do you just want to finish up the briefs? And then kind of take the, a brief hiatus so that we can recalculate our thinking? Or do we want to give these people a timetable, say, look, if you can't respond with additional information by such and such? We're going to move on. Yeah, I know how to do that.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
I think giving a deadline probably is, is a good idea in that regard.
I do too.
Um, yeah, because if Sandra Roberts doesn't even have any estimates yet, the twelve-point-five thousand is not being done too much, and when she gets the estimates, and someone who's just gone through a renovation, she may decide to find an empty seat in a salon somewhere, and, and who knows, we're just guessing. And then the Maritime Education Network at three-hundred, I ran by there the other day. God, things starting from scratch and kind of some good ideas, maybe really more upstairs, but yeah.
Yeah, so I think it would help settle us, because we do have to eventually introduce to everyone else that, you know, we gave them a timetable because we have to move on.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, good idea, okay, I will, I'll send out a note, uh, tomorrow through the, through the screen.
Are we, we saying to the end of, you know, December thirty-first, or?
Oh, no, I think we, I, we, we've been, we've been having this conversation to, uh, what they were due September one, we're down, so we're at, you know, two months, so I think, um, I will give them by, um, maybe November fifteenth.
That makes me wrap up for the town meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm, just, that makes me feel better, thank you.
I love it, you, you close every loop.
Okay, and then, um, well, Kristin or Casey, do you have ideas?
I have nothing more to add.
Okay. And Casey is, oh. Uh, maybe, let's, um, Matt has pointed out to me that our next meeting is scheduled for Election Day, um, which may may have an impact on people, I don't, I guess, let me ask the question, do, are people available to meet on, on November eighth?
I am not, it's Maureen, it's my son's birthday, so I will be, I don't know, doing dinner and cake somewhere.
I say, bring him in.
That's the birthday ever had.
We'd all love a cake, so, um.
I'm on the town. It's a, schools are not in session, I'm Friday for Tuesday.
Oh, okay, all right, all right. So then our next meeting after that would be the twenty-seventh.
Which is Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
Twenty-seventh, so we call a special meeting for another day that week, other than, yeah, or in the middle?
Yeah, do you want, Jennifer, should we do like, a doodle and see whether we can get, get a meeting in November, within the first couple of weeks?
What about November fifteenth, the Tuesday in between?
Uh, do you want to pass the deadline, we want to meet, want to meet after that?
Yeah, well, I can change the deadline. What's the Friday, the Friday of the fifteenth?
On the eleventh, which is next day, so maybe the tenth.
Yeah, so I'll give them to you.
And I feel like, I, I guess I would say, I echo everything that everybody else said, and I feel like if we give a deadline, it could be, you know, two or three weeks from now, two weeks from now, and then we meet once before Thanksgiving, and we can vote whatever can be advanced, and then we can, I mean, I don't mean to like take such a harsh position, but like if you haven't gotten your information, and then it gets sort of, you know, turned back in, and then we pause for the holidays and pick it up again in January.
Okay, so later, by the minute. Um, and maybe at the meeting then, on the fifteenth, we can, uh, identify a couple of these bigger ideas, and we could be getting that out to the community and to see, like, if it's affordable housing, we can get folks at Hope Partnership or others to be thinking about it and say, look, when we get back in January, be ready, come in and give us your ideas, so we can be generating some thinking in that, um, in-between time.
Yeah, I think it's important to get the right people around the table in those exploratory sessions, yeah.
Okay, that sounds good. With that, um, any additional comments from community members?
May I say thank you?
Okay, you certainly may, there's a pledge you're having here. With that, will I, uh, hope you can turn?
Oh, four, huh?
Emotionally, I'll say.
All right, who's the second one? Please, all in favor, say aye, any vote?
Aye.
Bye, bye.
Thank you, bye.
Bye.
Happy Halloween.